Hello and welcome to the Select Men's Meeting for December 2nd, 2014. Call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Carolyn Smart present.
Colin McNabb present.
And Sulisios present. Could you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that this meeting is being tape-recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions, Andy? Do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Neither do I. Town Administrator updates and reports.
Just a couple of things. I'll try to keep it quick. Just a reminder for everybody at home, tomorrow night is our special town meeting, beginning at 7:00 here at Town Hall. Got 21 articles to review. Information is available on the homepage of the town website. Mentioned it last week, tomorrow and Saturday are the last two days to take advantage of the Devens Household Hazardous Products Collection Center. Open 9:00 to noon tomorrow and Saturday, weather-dependent. I think we're getting some crummy weather either tonight or tomorrow, so that may affect their operation. And then, two things I just wanted to touch base on that came up in recent meetings. We had, when we were talking last week about the staffing plan down in the Collector's Office, Andrea Wood had made a comment about transferring the office administrator or shifting her hours or something, the water department office administrator. And I don't know, I think I kind of misunderstood what she was asking at the moment. I don't think my response maybe was that clear. That had never entered into the conversation of transferring any staff around, certainly not transferring the office administrator. She's at the water department full-time, so it's not something that we had ever contemplated. It's also a union position, so it does raise some issues in that regard. So, in terms of the positions that are being created, and we can talk about it in more depth if you want when we get into the town meeting conversation or tomorrow night. But we would be, you know, we would be posting these as, like we do with any position, whether it's a new position or vacancy. So, we'd post and hire the best person that we can find for those positions. And then the other one, there's a question about the pension system and whether somebody who comes in, comes to the employment of the town sort of late in their career, if we're somehow responsible for a majority of their pension. And the way that the pension systems in Massachusetts work is every employee throughout their career, as long as they're working 20 hours a week, they contribute into whatever pension system that community is part of. For us, it's Middlesex retiree. So if they work for five different communities, they make contributions, you know, throughout their career. And then the pension is, pension checks are actually cut by the pension system, not by the town. So, for people that bounce around, you know, that have multiple positions in communities that are parts of different pension systems, those contributions move with the employee. So if somebody works in Worcester County, in a Worcester County community, and they contribute, then they move to a Middlesex County community, those contributions follow the employee around. So, at the end, it's distributed by whoever they retire from, but it's not from the community itself.
It's similar to a 401K. If you leave a company, you can transfer that 401K to your new company or whatever.
Yeah. So I've worked in a couple of different communities that have been parts of different retirement systems. So, as I've moved, those funds have moved with me. They moved out of Middlesex into an independent retirement system, back into Middlesex when I came here, so.
Carolyn?
Actually, that was my question, and I wasn't sure how the retirement system had worked. So, I know the contributions come from those communities, but when an employee retires, it's the retiring town, say it was Townsend. This would be the retiring town. And aren't we assessed on how many people are retired depending on what that retirement system is doing as far as investment-wise? If they're losing money, we're assessed more. If they're making money, then, that's how I thought I had understood it, if I could be wrong.
Yeah. The, I suppose it has some bearing. But the retirement systems, when they do their actuarial analysis, like they did a couple of years ago before our big, we got a big bump. Part of that, most of that was driven by, most of that increase was driven by what the age of our, what our demographic is. It was clear when they did the actuarial study that we had a lot, a number of people that are approaching retirement age. So we were hit harder on our ARC, our annual required contribution, in anticipation of those people retiring. So, you know, somebody that comes towards the end of their career, they only do a few years here, they're not going to have a big effect because, again, they've been paying through their whole career.
Carolyn?
Actually, since you brought that up, have we had a chance to talk to our retirement board about all the employees that we have? I know we got hit a few years ago, but we've had a lot more, even some that maybe weren't expected that are retiring.
Well, they look at the full census by group. So for public safety employees who can retire at 55, potentially at 80%, they look at those and if, you know, if we, if a community had, you know, a large number of people that were 52, 53, and they had the years of credit that would allow them to retire at 55, they would take that into consideration. That's what happened two years ago for us. So, that's an ongoing thing that the retirement boards, retirement systems do. So, we don't, they look at that on their own. We don't have to alert them to it because they're aware of it.
Yeah, they're aware of it. Do we have an idea if we're going to get a higher assessment this year? Have they?
When they did that update a couple of years ago, they projected, I forget if it was 6.5% or 4.5% for fiscal years 15 through 20, I think. So, it's already been laid out there, so we know what that's going to be. I apologize, I didn't bring with me, I don't remember what the number is offhand.
Okay. Well, we can, I mean, we could talk about it. I mean, certainly budget time, it's going to come up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. But I thank you for updating us on that.
That's all I've got.
That it? Okay. Board of Selectmen's, any announcements, updates, reports?
I did have one. I just wanted to remind everyone in town that on Sunday, it's the 7th, right?
Yes.
At 5:00 is going to be the tree lighting on the town common. And just so everyone knows, I have not finished decorating the common yet. So, I've had a couple of people say to me, you know, is that all that we're going to put up? And no, I still, it's been a busy couple of weeks, but anybody who wants to come and help me on Saturday, welcome to.
Thank you. 1.7 approval of meeting minutes from November 18th.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes for November 18th, 2014.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
6:05, Green Communities Annual Report. Karen Chapman's here. Tell us about the annual report.
Well, it's, the annual report is for the state to discover that we've been following modified criteria of being a Green Community. So they ask questions about our vehicle inventory and if we've bought new vehicles, and then do they follow our policy? They ask how many building permits are, have been gotten under the stretch code and what their energy rating is. So we pull all those numbers together, as well as the numbers from the Mass Energy Insight, which is the data of all the energy usage for the whole town. What I gave you tonight is basically a summary with some statistics. If we start at the top, the total energy use change since our baseline year is only 2%. I know when we were here for an update a couple of months ago, we were hoping that they were going to use the normalized weather data, and they're not. So, we are only down 2%. There's five categories of usage that they use. They're listed here, buildings, vehicles, water and pumping, streetlights, and open space. Those are the categories that we fit all our buildings and vehicles in. And then there's four major categories of data, which is natural gas, electric, gasoline, and diesel. There's also propane and oil, but we barely use any of that anymore. Natural gas is the highest at 33%, and electric is 25%. Our total usage for vehicles is 39%, which is very high and is common for small communities like ours. The next table is the seven major energy users by department. Not in any particular order, they're alphabetical, so. But the highlighted ones show you which departments or buildings use the most of each of the categories of fuel. Then, the solar array at the Harbor Trace Pump Station that shows you the kilowatt-hours that we generated in fiscal year '14 as compared to the total electricity use. It's about 4.6%, which is pretty good. So the total energy used by Townsend in fiscal year '14 was 11,615 million Btu, mm Btu, which is thousands of thousands of Btu's. And one of the things that the committee has discussed with Kelly Brown, who's the regional coordinator for Green Communities, is adding a couple of the schools here in Townsend to our overall database in order to increase the number of buildings and opportunities that we have to use the money. Because the money that we use this year, pretty much we've done all of the buildings, you know, the low-line fruit light, lights, and windows. We did a couple of major projects, the boiler at the police station, and water pumping stations. So those are major projects, but there really aren't any major projects that we can do because we did a lot of stuff before we left this grant. So we're considering adding a couple of the schools. I've sent an email to Superintendent Landers to see what her thoughts are on it. We want to get some of their data to see if it's possible to do that.
Okay.
Oh, and we are getting a six-month extension. The grant ended, ends the end of December, but we've asked for an extension to spend the, with 14,000, $11,000 that are left. And to wrap up the final report, and hope to apply for a competitive grant in March.
Good. Any questions?
Yeah, by adding the schools, and have you been able to look at the data to see if it would maybe help towards our percentage, the 20%? Have they put in energy efficiency things over the last three years that we could use?
Well, we're not so much looking at what they've done over the past five years. It'll be what we can do for them in the next two years.
To try and up our percentage.
Because we still have time. We have until the end of calendar year '16 to get to the 20%. And they're thinking by adding the schools, which have huge square footage, and there may be more opportunities. And it'll add more buildings instead of having more vehicles.
Other communities have done this and been very successful that are in similar situations to us, because of the fact that it is such a large amount of square footage. Yeah, there's probably a lot of opportunities for energy reduction in that square footage. See, that's what they recommended. I think it's a good idea. We need some help to get to that 20%.
Any other questions? Karen, again, we thank you for your time and effort in this.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
It's many hours, and I'd like to get off. Very appreciated.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, it'd be a motion to accept and sign the annual report, Green Community Annual Report.
So I would move that we accept and sign the annual Green Communities Report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Not all those in favor? Do you have that?
Yep. There's only one line, but all three board members should sign. Do you have an extra copy of that, Karen?
Yeah, I can give that to you tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Karen. The number's in there that you may want.
Thanks, Karen.
I don't know. Is there appointments on the bottom of the?
Yes.
I'd be happy to take that order if they want to.
Could we, why don't we do that? We're going to jump down for just a second, down to 4.2.
James, chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Kathleen Thompson to the Energy Committee, effective immediately, for term effective immediately until June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Tell your friends.
2.2, discussion on North Middlesex Regional High School permitting and inspections. Commissioner Rich Hanks is here. Hi, Rich.
Good evening. Why, if I could knock you down?
Oh, please.
Just in four.
Mr. Chalk could join us, too.
I'm good.
I brought backup, I brought Mr. Chalk.
You have something to present?
Yeah, I was, as you probably recall, some time ago, I put in a cost analysis of what I believe that the anticipated additional cost would be to the building department for this high school project. So I had done a cost analysis, and then from that, I've, and I guess that's why we're here, is to open dialogue as to what's the best method of compensating inspectors for their time on the project. So one of the methods I came up with was to take the cost analysis and break it down over the 130-week total time that the project is going to be from when we start receiving plans for review to the occupancy permit of the new building. As far as Phase 2 of the project, the demolition of the old one, the parking lots and stuff like that, I don't believe that that's going to consume too much of our time. I think that we can absorb that into our regular workload. So this is really tailored towards the, from plan review to all the inspections, site visits, meetings, reviewing test results as they come back from engineers and architects. So, I guess I'm looking for input from the board as to what's the best method of compensating the inspectors. And, you know, the question for?
Oh, no, I just wanted, after you're done, I wanted to say something.
Okay. So one of the methods I came up with was to take that, the projected cost that I anticipated would be and divide it out over the 130 weeks and all the inspectors would get us a weekly pay for compensation for their time.
Colin, you have a question?
I vaguely remember something about this back, probably a year ago.
It was about a year.
Well, I think what we did, I think we?
That's my moment, Andy left.
Oh, yeah. Because we waived, I think, didn't we, we waived the fees? And then, but we were still, we still kept in mind the fact that we would have to compensate the inspectors more.
Right, because the?
What we had talked about was, when the building committee was putting together the budget, one of the things that was talked about was most communities waive the inspection fees for the schools that they're building. When we looked into it, we said, well, the concern there was that we don't have, other than the commissioner, we don't have full-time inspectors. Okay? We have part-time inspectors that are, you know, they're given a stipend, and that's based on the normal amount of work that they do. So, that's when Rich put together that first estimate of, you know, what do you think this could cost? And it was the $350,000, basically, is what we ended up at the building committee putting in the budget. And we said that later we would come back and talk about how are we going to handle that? You know, how are we going to do the accounting? And exactly how are people going to be compensated? So, what I'm hearing from you, it sounds like one suggestion is to give them a regular stipend, if you will.
Correct.
Based on this project and an estimate of how much work. I looked at the worksheet, and the first worksheet that we were sent that was in the packet is apparently the original one. It's 351, 250.
Right.
Okay? And this one was based on, this, well, it was based on 120 weeks rather than 130, okay? So if you're talking two and a half years, you've really got to compute that down to 52 weeks a year, et cetera.
Right.
Okay, and I didn't have this in Excel, so I played with it. I actually keyed it, but I haven't done things like that for a long time. So it was a bit, it was kind of fun. But I wanted to understand the formulas that were behind this, okay? And did you get a copy of what I did?
I did not.
I thought, Andy, did you pass that out?
Thank you. Yeah, there's copies in front of each of the board members.
Oh, is that what we're giving to them? Mm-hmm. You got it? Because I think I have a second one. That's one. There were two pages.
Yeah, two pages stapled together.
Yeah. Got it? Okay. So I kind of did it, I did it my way. But I just took the numbers that were on that so that I could break them down to figure out what this consisted of.
Sure.
Just to start the discussion, anyway. So I made this into four sections. Building plan reviews.
Yeah.
Site visits.
Right.
Tests and meetings, travel and expenses. And then down at the bottom, separating out administrative staff and supplies.
Yeah.
And when, the way that this broke down, it broke down the hours per week, if that was applicable in the first section, it's not, it's just hours.
Right.
And the hours for the total of the project.
Yeah.
The cost.
Yeah.
And that was computed based on $45 an hour.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I did that correctly.
Yeah.
When I added up the sections and totaled the cost, I came out with $354,000 on this one. If you look at the next one, the one that was based on the 120, 120 weeks is the one that should match yours.
Okay.
But this one came out to 331.
Okay, he's a factor.
Yeah.
That's okay. Yeah.
Okay. The 331 should have been, according to yours, 351. And what I found was, down at the bottom, you have a $20,000 entry here that was getting added into the total, for which there was no description.
Yeah, that's why I revised that to get my?
That's what I thought. Okay, so you revised that, but basically it's the same thing. You revised it so that it was based on the correct number of weeks.
Yeah, when I did the initial one, it was kind of a, I guess, something to show what it was going to be.
Do the budget.
And I did it based on 30 months, but if you, but when I redid it, it's really 130 weeks.
That's right.
So that's where I went amok. And that $20,000 was kind of like a, it's kind of a cushion type of thing. It's like, either we need it, or we don't. And it turned out it was a good thing it was in there because when I revise it based on the actual weeks and not by the 30 months, it did eat into that 20.
Okay, so that's just coming up with the difference from what you had given us for the budget before.
Right.
I understand. Any questions on this so far?
Not really for Rich. I understand what he's trying to do, and I don't have a problem with making it a weekly, I mean, a monthly, part of their stipends for the additional inspections. But what about all the costs associated for the fire department inspections? And I don't know if there'd be any for the show, the board of health, or? If we're going to be looking at the total cost of inspections, shouldn't they have to be included in this?
What's in the show, but, oh, you mean the board of health.
The subject, yeah.
Please, I know the fire.
That, board of health was never raised. Rob's here. Rob, we never heard anything on inspections from board of health.
So there's no issue there?
Well, no, we just had not, it had not come up in discussions.
Oh, okay.
Andy?
The original discussion the board had last September focused only on the building department inspections. In fact, in the cover memo, it says this doesn't include conservation, planning, zoning, and board of health, so.
Oh, okay.
So any of those, any costs associated with that would be separate from the bottom, the $350,000.
Okay, so we're just talking about this. All right.
To Carolyn's other point, though, about the fire department, I think we overlooked that at the time, so. Yeah, so they're going to have to, they will be inspecting sprinklers and, and they do the, do they do the exit signs, or is that?
No, that's us.
That's you?
They would be involved with sprinkler system, the alarm.
Yeah.
Okay, but this discussion has to do with North Middlesex, not with the fire station?
No, we were talking about the fire department's inspections of North Middlesex.
Oh, okay, all right.
Sprinkler system and things like that.
I see, I see what you're saying.
Pressure testing.
No, that was not part of this.
Right.
That was not part of this. I think it's, I can't speak for the building committee, but as a member, my feeling was that we were going to try to waive permit fees wherever we could. And because that, otherwise what we're doing is really billing twice. You know, we're paying for the project, and then we're paying ourselves for the permits, too. The other thing that I wanted to say, though, is when we talked about this initially, we wanted to make sure that no one in Townsend, you know, in the town of Townsend, none of our employees were going to be, not be compensated for that, for their time. Because we don't have full-time electrical and plumbing and gas inspectors, one of the things that we had talked about was, and this was just kind of bantered back and forth, was taking some, taking the money and allocating it on a per-hour basis, paying them by hour for the hours that they worked. And I'll be honest with you, the building commissioners' hours were assumed to be salary regardless of the work. Although I understand you may have need to have help from an assistant. When we talked about it initially, I never, I never even thought that we'd be paying additional for our commissioner, who's full-time anyway. So, that, I think, is a sticking point on this one. Colin, you have a question?
Well, I know, Rich, you work, you only work Monday through Thursday, right?
Correct.
You work Friday, so in this project, you're probably going to be having to sometimes come in.
Oh, absolutely.
Either to finish the work that you can't do on those days or to do additional work on that day. So, in that way, if I look at it that way, I don't have a problem with.
You're not full-time?
I am full-time.
And your salary?
I am salaried. What I think what Colin's alluding to and to give the example is that, that meeting we had at the high school to talk about the plumbing and plumbing and stuff like that, that meeting was three and a half hours. I had to stay here till seven o'clock that night to take care of my inspections that I had arranged for that afternoon because that meeting was only supposed to have been an hour. So, my day got extended out. And a project of this magnitude, that's going to continually happen, is that if, I guess, what do you want me to dedicate my time to? You know, there are ways you can do it. You can hire an assistant for me so that I can allocate my time to that and you pay an assistant to pick up my routine day-to-day stuff. Or, I see your point. I guess you're paying me salary. So, it's, I'm here to discuss this as to what's the best method. Again, if, I know I will be overwhelmed if you expect me to be putting in 60, 70 hours because I have to deal with this high school as well for the same rate of pay.
Then we probably should talk about what our expectations of salary are. Typically, it's, you put in whatever time is necessary to get the job done, understanding that there are going to be weeks where you don't have a lot to do, you know, especially that kind of a business, that kind of a job. And then there are other weeks where you're going to have to put in extra time because there is extra work. Now, on a sustained basis, we may say, you know what, for those extra days or extra hours, if it's on a regular basis, we could entertain compensation above and beyond, but, I mean, I'm just, I was a salaried employee. And when you're a salaried employee, you do the job.
Well, the only thing I have to add to that, Sue, and not to disrespect you or anything, it's just that, I understand the salary. I understand that on my day-to-day, for my typical workload, yes, some weeks are easy weeks, some weeks are, I am putting in more, you know, so it all equals out to around that 40 hours. We're looking at an $86 million project that, just for the school, is 30 months. Okay? A project like that doesn't come to a small town like this every day. If we were a big city like Worcester, something like that, and they have a staff of nine inspectors and they can absorb that, you know, okay, so they all buckle down and then, you know, they all, they may dedicate one inspector just to that project. We don't have that. It's, you know, I'm the one person. I'm zoning, I'm in the charge of the department, you know, and now you, now to oversee an $86 million project, it's how much impact you want your paid officials to be on this project. Again, you could hire someone to help pick up the slack. You could sub off the plan review. There's companies that, that's all they do is plan review. So, there's different ways of getting to the same result. It's just that, again, it's a commitment of 30 months of me working 60, 70 hours a week. If you think that's fair, then I guess I'll have to thank you for that. You know, I don't know what else to say on that.
Carolyn?
We had you oversee this project.
You did.
Ninety-nine. How did we compensate you for that? Because we didn't expect you to do all that additional work.
That's a good point. When I started here, they had me oversee this project.
This project?
The water hall.
The renovation of Town Hall.
Okay.
So, this was one in a year and a couple of months. So, they paid me an additional $500 a week to oversee this project. They being the selectmen at the time.
Under normal circumstances, I would agree with you about the salaried part, but this is an unusual situation. It's a giant, it's a, a project, a $90 million project doesn't come around very often. And, you know, it's, I, considering...
Eighty-six, by the way.
Sorry, eighty-six. I stand corrected. Considering how much time, in addition to the 40-plus hours you put in, that Rich puts in currently, I'm, and this is just me, I'm fine with additionally compensating him.
I guess it doesn't matter if we were to compensate a part-time inspector, assistant, versus giving you some additional compensation. It doesn't matter. My concern is that we simply take the amount of money and those hours and split it up because at this point, these are estimates.
Absolutely.
And in fairness, you, as well as in fairness to the project, I think it would be better if we could figure out a way to do billable hours. I mean, at one point, you and I talked about this briefly at one of the meetings.
I guess the question comes up, and that kind of happened with this project, with ethics, is that, and then I have to go back to some 16 years, but they had to amend my job description to include this project as part of my duties in order to pay me additional money.
The Town Hall project at that time?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. So, I'm just thinking of the logistics of that.
We added it to your contract, right?
What's that?
We added it to your contract.
I think so. So, I don't have any issue with that. It's just that we have to work out the logistics of how that could really work because you do pay me salaries, so could you pay me hourly above that? So, I don't know if that's, if that's a legal thing, so I'm just...
Well, I mean, it's no different than doing it this way.
Well, doing it this way, you would, and I'm just...
You'd be getting an additional check.
Well, an additional check or you, I do, I did have a contract with the town and the selectman had the ability to enter in the contract with me. You could amend my contract so that this is part of my salary until the end of the project. You could timeline my contract.
That's a clean way to keep it, and that's what I believe we did the last time.
Well, I, I mean, that's something to think about. What I was picturing, and I don't know if it's possible, and I thought you were going to talk to Kim about it, but now Kim is gone, so it would be talking to Terry.
I talked to her about the, how we handle the revenue that comes in.
Yeah. And so, we've got this, there's $350,000 that's allocated in the budget for the building for this purpose. Is it not possible to simply bill the building committee for the hours as they're used?
Well, the way that the, just for the, oh, sorry.
Rob? You're here because this was of interest.
My, yeah, I guess my concern about, and I don't know how, I'd have to look into it, my concern about the stipend is just from an MSBA reimbursement standpoint, how does that, you know, how does that work? They're going to want to see, you know, X hours paid for this service, and then, obviously, the district is going to have to account for some of that and the, you know, the MSBA would reimburse for the others. I would need to look into, you know, kind of what our backup...
If we could even do the stipend thing.
From our invoices, I don't, I don't know how it would work that.
Carolyn?
Well, I'm a little bit confused. I understand one thought process is to maybe bill the school monthly to cover our costs, but I thought we were talking about charging permit fees and we'd use those permit fees to offset the cost of the...
No, we never talked about that. That was the reason that we put the 350 in the budget, was to compensate Townsend for anything that they would otherwise not be compensated for, because we don't have, as Rich said, a full-time staff.
So, the 350 is not for permit fees, it's just to absorb additional costs for employees?
That's correct.
Well, the way that it's...
Our assumption was that there would not be, we wouldn't need to do that. Now, I guess, from an accounting perspective, you could do permits, if you will, to pay for the hours.
That's what I thought we were discussing.
You could do that.
Yeah. The, as I recall, conversation last year and the, and the letter that was written, there would be a fee assessed for the permits, but it would be less than what the normal formula would calculate. The normal, the normal formula would be like $800,000 or something?
Yeah. If you went with our current fee schedule.
That's right. That's, I remember that.
And you fight for that project, the fee was close to $1 million, it was 800, 900,000. So, then, that's when I raised the subject with Andy, that number one is to be an excessive workload for the building department and that my, all my other inspectors are all part-time, it's not fair to them to pick that up. So, that's when I come up with the spreadsheet of the 351 of an anticipated workload, and I thought that that was going to be the permit fee.
That's what I...
So, that's the number that you carry as far as your budgeting went, but I thought...
So, no matter what you call it, it's for the, it's for the same purpose?
It's for the same purpose, but you're not paying out the school committee fund. That comes into the town of Townsend as a permit fee. And then the town of Townsend distributes to the inspectors and services.
Okay. So, would it work? And I mean, this is logistics that you guys could figure out and then come back to us, okay? But I would say this, maybe, both of you meeting with Terry, okay? And maybe with Nancy as well, okay? Because it's really, how do, how do we do it? First of all, I'm not comfortable with just a set stipend, okay? Because I don't think that's fair to either side, either group. I don't think it's fair to you guys if you end up putting in more hours and that's all we've compensated you for. And nor do I think it's fair to the communities and to the project, the building project, if it's less hours than what was estimated and they end up paying more. Bear with me for just a second. So, what I'm thinking is if you could go back and the four of you maybe get together as to how we would do that, if it's going to be fees based on numbers of hours of work, that's the fee. And instead of saying, you know, we're paying you for X number of hours, we're paying you on a permit, for a permit that is calculated based on the number of hours being billed.
Well, that is what that spreadsheet was all about, was that this was my best guess scenario as to what I anticipated that time would be. Now, that being said, is that if, and again, this is all discussion and what's going to make everybody comfortable, is what I'm trying to get to. All the inspectors are comfortable with these numbers that they'll commit their time, they'll commit to 30 months, they'll represent the town as best they can on the project. And they're willing to do it at that set fee for that duration. If you do it by a billable hour and you carry the 351 in the budget, what happens if it becomes 360 or 370? Do you have that surplus $10,000 or $20,000? So, it's a compromise of, which one is the better scenario? I don't know. But this is a, as a set number, you know what your inspection service is going to cost you for the duration of the project, and they're not going to come back to you for more. It's, you know what I'm saying? They're going to commit to the project, they're going to take care of what needs to be done for this weekly pay, or if you want to do it by the month or whatever it comes out to. Or we can bill by the hour. But you don't have, you don't have an endpoint, knowing that, what if it is now 370 because the project went longer or they spent more time than they anticipated? So, it's kind of trying to find a compromise that fits you in your budget and yet...
Well, it's not just that. I'm concerned about the MSBA, too, in how we pay for this stuff.
Yeah, and I can, I can get with, I mean, they figured it out before. We just have to ask questions.
Okay.
Figure out how they've done. It's just, it has to go through the whole process, right? So, it gets distributed reimbursement by the other towns and makes Townsend whole. Right? That is the goal from the beginning, was to ensure there wasn't undue burden on Town and Townsend because it's a regional district.
Mm-hmm. So, we know that somehow we're going to figure out how to make it so that it's not an undue burden on the town. Carolyn?
Yeah, I thought, like I said before, that we were having permit fees. Within your SBA loan, you're allowed to pay permit fees, correct?
Yes. But again, what typically happens with these, again, when it's Townsend building a school, is the town just waives all that, all those things, right? Because it's paying, the town paying themselves. That's what the designers are telling us. So, we basically went back to our designers and said, "Look, you can't, Townsend just can't waive all of their fees because, you know, it's a regional district."
Well, the biggest concern was...
It's only Townsend providing...
Right. Well, we talked about some larger communities were able to do that for the same, what Rich just said a little while ago. They have a full-time staff. They have the bodies and, you know, there's two people that could take turns going out, and one person goes one way and the other one goes the other way. So, in a town like that, that can happen. And they can waive the fees because it doesn't make a difference. They have the staff to cover it. What we brought up very early on in this discussion, when they said that about the permit fees typically get waived, we said, "Well, number one, you know, this is a, this is a district, okay? And this is all falling on Townsend, and we don't have full-time staff." So, we wanted to make sure that we had some money put aside in the budget to be able to cover whatever hours it was going to take to do that. And that's where the 350 came from.
Yeah. That's why I brought up a few months ago, either, I would like, me personally, what I'd like to see done is that you form a regional agreement with the Town of Pepperell and Ashby's building departments and fire departments to have shared services if we're not going to charge permits, or we charge permit fees to cover all our additional costs, because the fire department is most likely going to have to dedicate one person to inspections down there. It's going to be ongoing for a long time, do you imagine, Rich? So, you're talking a lot of cost for those two. So, either we needed to, in my opinion, sit down and have a shared agreement with the other two towns to absorb some of that burden, or we need to charge permits so that we can absorb that burden.
Well, I think Andy said, "We were going to do the permits, but we're doing the permits." The thought was doing the permits, like Rich said, too, based on how many hours.
Right. It was really just to cover the hard inspection costs and the plan review costs, not, you know, not the overhead and some of the administrative costs that is part of our normal permitting structure. So, it would come in as permit dollars, come in as a revenue source, as a permit fee. And then it would, you know, then we get a, you know, really the bigger question is how do we, how do we pay it? How do we pay that?
I'm confused on multiple levels. Okay. So, whether we call it a permit, a fee, or whatever, it doesn't matter. This, I think, is fine. I think it was, it makes sense to me. How, you know, that's for, you know, the finance team to figure out how you, you know, give it out. And then, obviously, Rob is to find out from MSBA, how, can we do that? You know, how, what are the rules regarding that so that then they'll reimburse it? But I do remember last, like I said, last September, we waived that $800,000, except for enough to cover the inspector's time.
Their time.
Yeah.
That's right.
I remember doing that.
And that's why I'm on the hourly thing, okay? Because I don't think it's fair to the building project. Let's say it only comes to 300,000. There's another 50,000 that's in there that could be allocated to the alternates.
What happens if it comes to 400,000?
What happens if we have an overage on other accounts?
If we have an overage, then we either have to cut the project, cut scope, or go back to the town or change...
Well, I mean, just on this account. We budgeted 350.
Right, we budgeted 350.
What if it comes to 360?
Buy the money and put it different ways.
And how many construction sites go on and then not over? How many construction sites, you set an $86 million number two and you hit it. There's always cost overages in construction.
There's always cost overages in construction.
Not gonna be cost overages on this one, because we gotta, we gotta hit eight six, because that's what our budget is.
It'll be a first.
And, and that's why we're trying to lock it as a set number for our services so that, I, I totally see what you're saying, is that there's a, there's a likelihood it could come in less than the three fifty if you do a body hour, but there's a likelihood it could go over. And we're just trying to lock a set number that everybody can live with. The inspective team commits to it and they say, okay, well, we're gonna do the duration of this project, whether it's a hundred thirty weeks or a hundred fifty weeks, but we know that this is what we've got and when that, when we hit on one thirty, we're gonna keep working. But they, they know that they've, it's, it's, it's a compromise as to what's, what works.
Again, I, I don't know enough about what all this is into this, but from my standpoint, if you're all comfortable with the estimates on this, I mean, that's, you know, it's a reasonable approach to, to go through. And again, you guys gotta figure out how, you know, how you're gonna compensate, how you're gonna pay folks, if it makes Townsend whole, if it puts, you know, kind of a contingency or a cap on what the fees could be for this, for the project. And if everybody's comfortable with these numbers, we were comfortable enough with them when, when we reviewed it and put it through the budget and the MSBA was comfortable with everything in it. So I, I, I tend to think that if, you know, that if this is the number and this is what it's gonna be, one less thing we have to worry about being three seventy-five, three eighty, or I think, work this. What we need to figure out is can.
Can you do a stipend?
How, how do, how does the town have to bill the project?
Exactly.
Is it, you know, a stipend for this guy or this guy?
See, it's not like they've given us the three hundred fifty thousand and that's in an account for us to give you guys a check each week, so.
We just, I think we're.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure they could figure that out.
We're just gonna have to show the, because the, it's all gonna be based on the hourly rate, so we're just gonna have to basically show this happens, here's the backup and work through.
Based on hourly?
I, well, you're gonna have to break it down to an hour and that's how he built up his time, so I think that's how.
But that's not what you were suggesting. You're suggesting a stipend amount, the same amount every, every week regardless of how many hours are spent that week.
Right, because there's gonna be peaks and valleys, it's, you know, some weeks it's gonna be really busy, some weeks it's gonna be slow. It's gonna be, like, this is just breaking out over the average, but.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think what I'm, where I'm losing you guys a little bit, you two, is that if, if this is a permit fee, that comes to the Town of Townsend, it's not, and now it's away from you all. Because now it's, it's a fee that the town is receiving. So, so when the project staff, the building contractor, they got, who wanted the job, he cuts a check to the Town of Townsend, but three hundred fifty-one thousand, here's your permit, if you give me my building permit. That, that money is now the Town of Townsend's for Townsend's services. It's no longer yours to, to dole out on a weekly basis or monthly basis.
Right. But it's not the same amount every week. What you were saying was give this as a stipend amount on a, on a regular, ongoing basis. Isn't that what you, you started out by saying?
Right, the way he's.
Right, I, I said if you take the three fifty-one and you break into all the different categories that went along with your spreadsheet, my spreadsheet, and I came up with, well, if you take it in your average hour of a hundred thirty weeks, this is what it breaks down to per inspector.
But how do you get that to equate to what you're charging for a permit each week?
No, permit's one, one.
The permit is, is one shot, so, so when the, when the plans come in, the application comes in, you, you all being as board of selectmen have set a permit fee of three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars for the project, so.
So you're saying a single?
Right, so, so, so when the, when the building contractor comes in to get his building permit, he writes a check to the Town of Townsend for three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars because it's his building permit fee, which has been reduced down from the eight or nine hundred thousand because it was really, really taking care of town.
That's right, yep. Okay, I'm, I'm all set then, you explained it well. Carolyn?
Well, that's, that's why I've been bringing this up, because we also need to figure out how much we need to charge for the fire department, for their fire fee. So in addition to the three fifty, the, the reason I had my hand raised is how much did you carry in the budget for the school for permit fees?
Nothing.
Oh, not, that's what the problem is.
Exactly.
Also trying to figure out this all again. So we have no money in there for permit fees at all.
No, you carried the three fifty, right?
We carried the three fifty.
Three fifty.
We did not have anything additional that I remember for Board of Health or Fire Department.
There are, I'd have to go back.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Continents to build into the project, there's, I mean, we're dealing with the Board of Health, we're dealing with, you know, the Conservation Commission and those items as we go along. You know, if, if the fire department inspections weren't added to that, I would ask you to figure out what that number is and bring it to us as soon as possible. And then I'll probably go back to a different meeting and try and make a deal.
And.
Let's make a deal.
That's, that's basically where we're at, because what we started with that three fifty was not including those others.
Right. So I'm a.
I'm sorry, Colin's.
Okay, so I feel like we're going in circles a little bit.
Well.
Wait, 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 please let me finish. Rob is to find out about the billing from the MSBA. We have to have another meeting for Fire Department and, you know, all that other thing. So, but the matter in front of us, we're really is kind of just holding on until we find out, you know, about billing from the MSBA and then, you know, Andy working with the finance team to find out how we're, if we can do a stipend, if we can't, all that kind of thing, so I just.
Yeah, I was simply stuck on the permit fee part of it. But if, if we can do it as one, you know, this, this covers all of the permitting, okay? It's not permit by permit, it's the whole thing, then, then that would handle it. So it, it is at that, at this point, just waiting for clarification. Andy?
So there'll be, it may be a little oversimplified to say that there'll be a single permit fee, but probably, normally there would be a fee for building permits, fee for gas permits, fee for electrical permits.
But you can use these to figure that out.
But it's within that three fifty, right? So that's all gonna come in, as Rich said, it's all gonna come in as che- a check or checks to the town. That'll all get deposited like all the, like all the building permit fees get deposited. I did speak to Kim Fails a few weeks ago about this, asked her if a revolving fund made sense or some other, some other method. Her recommendation was just to put it in as a general fund receipt. Say, say it all comes, just for the sake of argument, say it all comes in in a single check, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. We split that up when we do the recap at the end of the fiscal year and we say, okay, so for fiscal sixteen, we're gonna take one fifty and we're gonna apply that. We're gonna retain the other two hundred and carry that over, because you don't have to, you don't have to account for all of that in the year that it comes in, you can, you can stagger that. Then in fiscal seventeen, you take another hundred and fifty, and then the balance in fiscal eighteen. So that you, you spread it out over the, you spread the revenue piece out over the course of the, the, the duration of the project. And then when we do the operating budget each spring, we're gonna have to appropriate a larger sum than we normally do to compensate the inspectors.
So this would be based on those three permits? And if we're able to figure out how to do the stipend, the weekly stipend thing?
Yeah.
So it becomes a wash at the end.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think it's worth checking with MSBA. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be an issue for them because all they're gonna do is go, okay, you spent, you know, ten million dollars on steel, you spent five million dollars on tile, three hundred fifty thousand dollars on permits. They're not gonna, they're not gonna see how.
I feel like they look at us a lot closer than that.
Well, I think, I think they're gonna look at what the permit fee is and then how we pay the inspectors. I don't think is, is really, I, I have a hard time imagining that MSBA is gonna get into that.
Yeah, if we're working it as a permit fee, that fee goes to you, you go.
Yeah, what we do with it, whether we, whether we pay Rich and, and the inspectors or we pay a, a cop with that, you know, it all gets lumped together.
All right, I, I don't have any problem with that, with splitting it that way then. I, I understand.
And, but we do have to, we have to figure out what, what the Fire Department piece is because that was, you know, I don't think that ever came into.
All right, can we deal with just this one to start out? Okay, so we don't get them clouded together? Because this we know is in the budget, we know the building committee's expecting this, but you're gonna have to do some homework on the other side, okay? As far as this is concerned, is the board okay with the concept of stipend being funded through general permits for, you know, for the amount to cover it from the building committee?
I, I have absolutely no issue with it, but do you mind if I go back to the revolving fund issue and doing it on recap? I know before I suggested I talked to the DOR during an apartment or revolving so that the money is isolated and then if there's anything left over, it can go back to the general fund. And you, you had kinda expressed a little bit of reservation, but when I was in the class at the DOR, they suggested even an agency fund. Did you and Kim talk to at all about agency fund?
Well.
I think it would be deposited in, in, in agency fund and then, and then sort of dispersed as a revenue.
So it'd be the same thing then, we're on the same track?
Yeah, it's more of an intro standard.
My only concern is that whatever solution, accounting solution you come up with, gets separated out from anything that's going to be used for trending where the town is concerned.
That's what he was talking about, agency fund, revolving or agency.
Exactly, because if it's not separated out, then it's gonna look like we've got this great big bubble.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Okay, and, and we don't wanna think that we're gonna keep funding that bubble.
Right.
Okay, it, it, it can totally mess up all of our expectations, okay? So, so I think it needs to be separate, I think the stipend itself needs to be separate somehow too, okay? It's for a whole different purpose, it's not part of the.
Yeah, and probably the cleanest way to do that is a separate line item within each of those budgets.
Exactly, because otherwise we're gonna look at those increases and we're gonna say, wait a minute, last year you spent this and everybody's gonna be scratching their heads.
Yeah, over the next.
Five years afterward, we're gonna say, why did that go down or why did that go up, so.
I'm good.
Okay, do you want a vote on this or do you guys wanna just go ahead and?
Twenty-five minutes ago.
I said, Andy, do you need a vote on this or do you want us, do you wanna just go back and finalize it and bring it back to us?
Maybe the cleanest thing is for me to go back, sort of draw it up so that we're, we've got a record, a written record of it, and then sort of a confirming vote at a later meeting.
That's fine with me.
Okay, great.
And either one of you guys, permits will start to come in or plans will start to come in January?
We have a site review next week, the week after, right?
We're anticipating sixty percent completion plans around January second. So we're gonna start getting fed plans for review around January second.
Okay.
Followed by ninety percent in mid February.
When's our next scheduled meeting?
I'm sorry.
Two weeks.
Yeah, ninety percent.
Can we, is that? Andy, is that enough time to put something together?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
One more question, for the agency fund, we don't have to have anybody created a side of the accountant, so it's not even a problem isolating those permit fees, so that, that's even better.
Yeah, I just wanna clean too.
Yep. That's what I was thinking revolving, but I think agency is better.
Painful, but we're good there, huh?
So if I hear click, if I, just to clarify, so.
This sounds good.
We're gonna work on this a little bit, we're gonna come back and at the next meeting.
Basically a summary of.
Yeah, and at the next meeting I will break out what the fee would be, the permit fee, with, based on wiring, plumbing, gas, and then the board of selectmen need to set that as, as part of the building department fee schedule. So anybody wants to build a high school, this is your fee.
That's how we did it with.
And that's what we did to library, senior center.
And that's what we do with the fire.
And that's what you're gonna do with the fire, with the new fire building.
That's fine, that's fine.
The specialty permit to new high school.
And if there's anything having to do with a contract or wording or finalization of, of this, can you guys just handle that?
Yeah, we'll work through that, those issues as well. And I'll talk to Chief Point about the Fire Department fees.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You're probably late for everybody else now, right?
Well, no, not really.
Keep in mind, it's free, it's, we're supposed to have freezing rain tonight.
Are you worried about me getting home?
I'm worried about me.
Getting home.
I'm just kidding.
Have you ever driven a Mustang, look outside, look here.
Don't worry about you, I'm worried about myself.
No, look outside.
Carolyn, you can't drive those things.
Worried about driving a hundred yards?
More, more thinking of everyone else.
I'm just stressing.
Okay, given, given that it's precipitating out, is there anything here that we can put off till the next meeting?
I don't think there's really anything that should take really that long.
Okay, three point one, Kinder Morgan Northeast Direct Pipeline, project updates. Did you get to go to the last meeting?
Um, no.
Thank you, Rob.
But it, it's been, the last meeting, the last coalition meeting was prior to our last selectman meeting. There's not a lot of updates, not much is happening. We're waiting for Kinder Morgan to, to reschedule the open houses. There've been no coalition meetings, the, as I mentioned two weeks ago, the, the apparent new preferred route is not through Townsend, it is through Southern New Hampshire, but it's kind of nebulous right now, it's all up in the air, so.
Okay.
Kinda waiting to, to see, there's a coalition meeting next week, so hopefully find out a little bit then.
Three point two, vote one nineteen sidewalk, continuation of the discussion, Andy?
So in front of you tonight, there is a spreadsheet that Ed Kukula got from Weston and Sampson with a cost estimate for doing a sidewalk from the common to the high school. The bottom line is two hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred is their, is their estimated cost for the design. So it's a little more than what we had in two thousand, I think it was two thousand eight, which was two to two hundred and fifty thousand, so, but it's, you know, it's in the ballpark. I, I'm actually a little surprised, I thought it might be even higher than, than this. But that gives us a, a number to work with, you know, in terms of a conversation going forward.
Colin?
So I, I had actually talked to Andy about this when I, because I was curious if it was gonna be in for this meeting. I think that, I was just kinda thinking about this, we should probably, in my opinion, check with the state first before we do anything to see if they'd still be willing to, to do this if we do the design work. And then at that point, I think we also have to take into account, down at the harbor, it was gonna be a wider sidewalk. And also, you know, then at that point is when we could possibly present it to the town.
Well, there's another thing though, and that is that this board already gave a commitment to the rail trail folks.
But that's why I'm talking about the wide sidewalk.
To use the hundred and, a hundred thousand to do that part of the study.
But that's like, we could, I'm saying is, we're taking, we take that into account, you know, when we, if we say to the town, we need another hundred and eighty thousand dollars, because we already have a hundred thousand.
So you're suggesting that we present this as a new proposal to town meeting?
I'm saying once we do these steps, like contacting the state and seeing if they'll still do it, then talking to all the parties affected, like the rail trail committee, and, who did I say before? I can't remember. Then at that point, bringing it to town meeting for the additional funds.
Carolyn?
It is a long process, I've, I've talked to Mass Highway, we have to start from scratch.
No, I know, you've said that.
And then go to MRPC and get it on the tip list. But what we can do in the interim, if, after working with the project managers and MRPC and getting it on the tip list and then you're waiting, God only knows how long before they'll come in and do it. What they did say is if they had a, if it was a small project and they were nearby, then it might have a faster chance, it would be kinda like one nineteen, we'd never know it'd be done.
But we still need the money for the engineering part.
We do, so what I, what I was hoping is that Ed Kukula obviously couldn't be here tonight because it's. it's, it's snowing. Maybe if we could postpone this discussion till the next full meeting and Ed could join us. He probably knows.
All right.
The route through MRPC.
So your concern, if, if, I just wanna make sure that I understand, your concern is that it get onto a list as soon as possible and that is what the sense of urgency is behind it?
Exactly.
Okay.
And in the spring, you could do two options. Folks, this is the amount of money we're gonna need to do what we've committed to for the rail trail. And this is the amount of money you're gonna need for us to do the three miles of sidewalk. What do you want to do? And then whatever that project is, will be on the tip list.
Yeah, I, I mean, this is a tough one for me because, to tell you the truth, to spend that kind of money on sidewalk, other than what we've already committed for the rail trail, I'd rather spend money on the roads, but that's just my, my thought. It's not top on my list, let's put it that way. Colin?
I never thought this was a choice of sidewalk or a rail trail.
It's not.
Okay.
It wasn't, but that's what I'm proposing it be now. It was, we appropriated a hundred thousand dollars and.
No, we've already committed to the rail trail for the hundred thousand.
Well, that's not what the town meeting approved. That's what the board of selectmen did. Town meeting moved the town transfer for surplus revenue, did a sum of a hundred thousand for the purpose of funding and designing, for the purpose of funding the design and engineering of a pedestrian sidewalk along Route 119 from North Middlesex Regional High School to the town common. That was the article vote. You guys have said, well, what I understood that you did, I wasn't here, is that you said we're committing to doing those sidewalks and included in that was the rail trail section. So I thought it was two birds with one stone, but maybe I'm mistaken.
Colin?
This, the reason, that's why I had mentioned that we need to get a little more information because the reason I said, included in this was doing a wider sidewalk at the harbor, was for the purpose of what we intended to begin with. So when the rail trail comes out onto 119, you know, that's part of the project. I'm not in favor of a, you know, this or that, like, you know what I mean? This is, I, you know, I don't quite understand why you're trying to kill the rail trail.
What are you talking about?
Because you're kind of suggesting an alternative.
No, the original.
I'm confused.
I guess so. No, what, what I was saying was, is that the project's gotta go on, whether we do the three miles of sidewalk, which includes the rail trail section.
Right, right.
It's all inclusive.
Because the rail trails.
Or we're only gonna have the money to do the rail trail section and not the whole thing.
Okay.
I'm not trying to kill anything.
Okay, I'm just confused.
What are you talking about?
But, but going back to what you just said, that was the part that we came to at that selectmen's meeting that time, when the rail trail people came to us and said that they needed that little detour part of the sidewalk, we said, well, you know, we've got this hundred thousand dollars that the town allocated for the sidewalk, only we know it's not enough to do the whole thing. We were told back then it wasn't enough, okay? So what we can do is use that hundred thousand for that section. And that was where that came from. Now, the discussion seems to be back on, well, yeah, but what do we need to do the whole thing, which to me is a separate project.
Well, cause we lost our opportunity. 119 came through and was paved. Now we have to start.
We didn't have the money anyway.
Well, that's, that's why I've been bringing it up since I got elected, cause it needed to be addressed. Now that opportunity's gone, so we're gonna start from scratch and we need to do that for the rail trail.
But we wouldn't have had that opportunity even if, if it was next year, cause we haven't, we didn't have the money to do the engineering study.
Which, I'm sorry, Colin, just one more question. Did, is it broken, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to read through it, but is it broken down by just how much this total amount is for three miles of sidewalk? Is it broken down by just how much the rail trail would need?
I don't think so. I think it's just a gross, gross project.
So maybe the hundred thousand dollars would cover the rail trail. I don't, you know, I don't know.
That was our, that was our thought.
But we'd still have to get it on the tip list. I mean, you still have to do that whole process.
That's right.
Whether we do the three miles or the shortened.
That's right.
Yeah. So I was just suggesting, if it's not enough money, you go and give the folks a choice. Hey, it's gonna be three hundred thousand dollars to three miles of sidewalk. It's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, which we already have for just the harbor, cause they were very passionate about having it.
I, I'm not sure how we'd do that at this point, but we could talk about it. Andy?
Yeah, we hadn't, in terms of the harbor sidewalk, we hadn't talked about the funding for the construction.
No.
We hadn't talked about whether that would be a tip project or that would be built by the town with local fund. Well, we'd sort of said that that wouldn't be the case.
That would not be the case.
Or that it would be built by the Squanico Greenways or, you know.
This was, that was just for the engineering.
Just for the engineering, so there was no discussion of getting that on the tip.
And I remember Bob being very adamant.
Right.
And very specific in the motion.
Right.
Saying, this is it. Hundred thousand for that section for the engineering study. And beyond that, the town was not committing to any kind of money toward that.
Correct, and we, and we didn't, we didn't talk about doing it through the tip.
So, so you, you think Mass Highway would have no problem, maybe Ed Kukula installing those sidewalks on that section of 119?
Notwithstanding the fact that we've committed not to spend money on the sidewalk on construction, I think if we went forward to Mass Highway and said, oh, we'll build it, do you mind?
That's, that's what I'm asking. And you think, cause we did it out here.
Yeah, I think they'd be fine with that.
So I'm saying that might be an option.
But the town has already committed and I think there was a non-binding vote not to spend money on construction related to the rail trail. So this, that may have to be worked through.
A non-binding vote from the selectmen?
I think there was a non-binding town meeting vote to that effect. I'd have to look it up, but.
Oh, I don't remember that.
I don't remember.
I thought the only.
Again, the, the selectmen committed last year not to spend money on construction associated with the construction of a, of the rail trail.
Yeah, basically, we gave them their, our blessing.
Right.
To go ahead and do whatever they needed to do and raise their funds and work with the railroad and, and all of that, that we would look at using the hundred thousand for engineering for the sidewalk there. And beyond that, there was no contribution to be expected from the town.
Right.
Okay. Colin?
So I think that, I agree with Carolyn in that we should table this until the next meeting when Ed can be here, but also I think we should invite the, the rail trail people to that meeting as well, so we can kind of have a little powwow and find, figure out what's going on. And then, you know, once we know the process and then we can decide if we're gonna go to, you know, at the, at the next town meeting, whether we're gonna go to the town and say, you know, we need X amount of money.
Would you mind terribly if we put this off beyond the next meeting?
I know we have a lot coming up with the holidays.
That's, you know, I just, it's just not top on our priority list, I don't think. I, it's something.
Sense of urgency's gone.
We need to talk about it in terms of budget and, and whatnot, but.
So in January?
That would be great.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we can't do anything till next town meeting anyways, so.
Okay. Three point three, authorized deficit spending for snow and ice.
Typical thing we do every year, authorizing.
Move into the hole.
Yeah, we're already, I don't think I brought it with me. We've already spent something like ninety thousand dollars on, on snow and ice this year, most of it in the purchase of salt. Obviously, a little bit of expense last week with the storm, so. And consistent with what we've done the last several years and, and following the DOR recommendation, what I've suggested for the board is a, is an initial authorization for seventy-five thousand dollars of deficit spending.
Carolyn?
And then they can come back if needed.
Chair, in accordance with Massachusetts General law, chapter forty-four, section thirty-one, DUE, the board of selectmen do hereby authorize the town accountant to issue warrants in the town treasurer to pay such warrants in excess of available appropriations up to seventy-five thousand dollars for snow and ice removal.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes there.
I only have two.
Three point five, review board of selectmen policy. Two point zero five, sick time donation.
Just three, four.
Oh, I'm sorry. I put the check at the wrong place. Special town meeting, just a little thing like special town meeting tomorrow night. Why would I wanna skip over that? What do we get going on there?
So in the, in the packets, there is the updated spreadsheet, which we talked about last week. Which shows the appropriations and the funding sources for, for all of those. The forty-two hundred for the building department will be part of raise and appropriate, as opposed to what we had talked about before as a, as a transfer. I've eliminated that whole transfer column to get rid of that confusion. So really, the, the outstanding issue that is in front of the board is whether you wanna move forward with requests for funding for a, an update to the compensation plan. As I, as I mentioned last week, and I know the board is, is split on this, I think there's, I'll throw in my sort of editorial comment first. I think there's, there's need and benefit to doing an update to the, to the compensation plan. We've seen it with a couple of recent hires, that we had people turn us down because we weren't, it wasn't that we were just a little shy, we were way out of the market. And so I think it, it merits taking a look at that. If the board is, is still uncertain, I think to keep all options open, you could ask for the appropriation. It gets, gets put in the budget, it sits there. If we don't, if you decide you don't wanna do it, it goes back to free cash at the end of the year. But if, if you don't have it, you can't do it, so.
Colin, you have a question?
Yes. Cause I remember, I, I was the one who asked that we put this off until this meeting. I still am just not sure myself personally how I feel about it. But, you know, when thinking about it, I think, when, often is the case with me is if I'm unsure, we should, I think we should just leave it up to town meeting to decide. And then at a later date, we'll, cause we're still gonna have to authorize it if town meeting authorizes it, you know what I mean? Like, what's Andy saying?
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think you'd want to give some kind of an argument to town meeting as to why you were asking for it, okay? And I think it holds much more weight if we believe in why we're asking for it. Now, I don't think it needs to be HRS, okay? I think that we might be able to figure out another way to do that, even if it were to hire attempt to come in and help us figure that out, okay? But I believe that that amount of money or, or that that project is an important one because we've seen it in several of the latest applicants that we've gotten, that, that people are, are saying, nah, no thanks, because we can't compete financially. Carolyn?
Well, I haven't changed my mind since last week, you know? I, I've outlined all my reasons, but to me, I'd rather spend the money on the comp and class plan itself and that you're supposed to adjust it by the CPI index and then keep up with the steps. And that would keep you competitive versus throwing, you know, four or five thousand dollars out to have a salary survey done. But to resolve it, I, I think last week we all pretty much got our feelings out. I, I'd make a motion to support that article and then we could vote on it and then discuss it at town meeting.
Well, I mean, that's great, but do you think that it should be looked at?
No, no. I outlined all my reasons last week. I think, I think that to look, yes, I'm sorry, that, that was the wrong thing for me to say. To examine it, to look at a salary survey that any one of us could do, absolutely, I have no problem doing the work on it. I have the problem spending the money on, on something like that.
Okay, but what about another solution to how we do that? Like hiring attempt to be directed by, by Andy's office to, to do that?
I would do it for free, so it won't take more than an hour or two. I mean, I just do.
No, I, I, I think it would, but.
I paid money for a benefit analysis, like I said last time, but.
Okay, so I, the one thing I would, will say is that I would be totally against anybody from this, that's associated with the town doing this, because I don't, I, I just personally think that it should be an independent body that does the, does anything of this sort. And it's not specific to this.
It doesn't have to be HRS, but your feeling is that.
Even a temp I wouldn't be in favor of.
Do you feel that this is an important thing to do?
I don't know. Well, I don't, I, I, I told you, I'm, I'm un, I've thought about this all weekend and, you know, when I was in my turkey coma, and I just, I am willing to let it go to town meeting, but I'm not sure personally how I feel about it.
Okay. Carolyn?
I just wanted to go back to Colin's point. I wasn't suggesting that we come up with the numbers. The MMPA, that's what they do, they put together the spent match. All that information is available, the salary survey. So it wouldn't be, even if I looked up the numbers, it wouldn't be anything I did. I'm just taking the numbers of the data that they gathered and pulling it forward. Are you, so you're not doing anything. I'm not suggesting somebody internally try and do a salary comparison for analysis to bring certain levels up, but if you, we're looking for numbers, a salary survey. That information's done independently by a third party and available to everybody.
So, but somebody needs to compile it and compare it to our stuff.
Or click and print right offline.
Well, yeah, but somebody still needs to analyze it and summarize it, et cetera, which is, I think to Colin's point.
For the raw data, though.
I think that's to Colin's point, is who's gonna work with that information and, and that that person should probably be an independent agent.
And I would even, like I said, even if it was somebody who, a temp working for our office, I would be uncomfortable for it, with it. So I just, I, just in anything to do with this sort of thing, I'm always in favor of an outside.
In favor of personal.
So.
The only thing that concerns me is bringing something to town meeting that doesn't sound like it has the full backing of the board.
Well, it can be, like I said, it's, town meeting is, you know, the most powerful body in Townsend, let them decide.
But we have an obligation to the town to say whether or not we believe this is a necessary expense and we are the ones that should be speaking to it and do speak to it on the town floor. And I think we need to either put it on and speak to it, and, and, I mean, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, I believe that we are not competitive anymore. The market has changed and I would like to see our salaries or our rates adjusted according to the market out there. And I would like to have the money allocated in order to do that.
How about a compromise with you? What if I was to support two thousand dollars allocated into professional services, that we look for a much cheaper way to do that cost comparison that covers Colin's concerns and then we can use that data to, to analyze it at a future date?
Okay, so that takes HRS off the table, but it does say that we could try to figure out how we might do that.
I would compromise with that.
What? You had said something else before and I can't remember what it was. That you were disagreeing with this about. I can't remember. I, I, I can't remember.
Just a disagreement.
Andy, does it seem reasonable to say, you know, two thousand dollars to be used toward?
I don't know. It's always dangerous when you pull numbers out of the air when, when there's, there's no, there's nothing to substantiate it.
Well, I mean.
I was talking about for a temporary.
I know, but I'm, I'm ready to say, you know what, allocate the, the four thousand dollars, whatever it was, and say, and that's for a full survey of all jobs?
Full salary survey of the, of the salary schedule. So they wouldn't go job by job, they'd be, they'd be taking jobs that are within the, within the, the grades and doing an analysis. But what you have to, what you have to keep in mind, it's not, it's not as simple, it's not a one or two hour job, first of all. It all depends on who you're gonna use as your comparables. It all depends on who you're going to use as your comparables. We, we had a conversation, we had a long conversation when we did the HRS project about who the comparable communities are. Comparable communities are not Arlington and Needham and Wellesley. They're also not Zorr and Florida and Beckett. So you have to, you know, you have to have some basis for the communities that you're picking. That's the benefit of using a professional firm that can, that does this on a regular basis. We might be able to find an HR manager, somebody who works for a community that's, that does this in-house, that may be willing to do this for a couple of grand. But I, I don't know if that's, I don't know if they're out there. I don't know who's interested.
To go to Andy's point with the comparable data with the communities, HRS already did this for us. We already have 10 communities that were picked out by HRS for...
Oh, so you're suggesting use those same communities?
Yeah, you know, and just pull the data off. I'm not suggesting that we, you might use like...
All right, so...
But to go back to, I know you said, you said something else. I would support spending money on possibly looking at the total cost package. That's what I think you were...
What do you mean, total cost?
Like, I said, so Town of Townsend has an insurance split of 85-15. So maybe the Town of Pepperell has an insurance split of 60-40, but they're a few dollars higher. I would like to do a comparison of benefit and salary analysis, because, just because, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, but just say Pepperell pays somebody, you know, $20 an hour, but they're required to pay 40% of the health insurance. Well, if we're only paying $17 an hour, but they're only required to pay 15, you know, that, that matters.
Yeah, you're looking at total compensation.
Yes. That's the only thing that I would care about. To look at salaries, like I've said, is, is easy. And you have the comparable towns and the last plan that we did.
Okay, so in terms of, of this article, what are you thinking, Andy?
Well, the, the board is the sponsor of the article. So if there's not a majority in favor of the article, I don't see how it goes to, to the floor.
I wouldn't want it to.
I think you're right. I think, I don't think it looks, I don't...
It's our, it's our job.
So I think if you want to, if you want to do a total compensation study, that's a completely different animal that hasn't been talked about before. I do think that we'll end up not looking good, not comparing well in that because of the whole retiree health insurance issue.
Yeah, we, we've got so many things related to this that have to do with the budget for, for next year.
The, the alternative is, we pick an accelerator for the salary schedule. And we say, "Okay, we, we think we're CPI behind. We think we need a CPI adjustment. We think we need 4%, we need 8%."
Just to be sure, what have we done so far?
We did a 2.5% for this year.
Okay, and that's a 2.5% across the board.
We accelerated the salary schedule 2.5% from grade one to grade 10.
Okay.
In all steps.
So you adjusted it for them.
And, but we did not move any people from a step one to a step two?
Correct. They stayed on their existing step in fiscal '15. Prior two years, we did, we did steps, but no escalator.
So it comes out the same if you just do one or the other, basically?
Yeah, the recommendation is that you do, that you do a cost of living adjustment every year or two, so that you don't lag, and you do a step if that's warranted annually.
And, and...
So we're a little, we're a little behind.
Okay, so that's something that we need to talk about as part of the budget discussions.
And another suggestion, I know it's not till May, but we were originally going to transfer the building department's salary out of health insurance, because Andy, Andy had said, suggested that there might be additional money in there. And maybe we could do a municipal relief transfer if we've isolated exactly what it is we're trying to accomplish for that purpose, instead of having to appropriate it at town meeting. Just a suggestion. It would be after town meeting, unfortunately, but maybe during the summer, that can be something that we look at.
I, I'm inclined to, to not, I don't feel like the board is in support of this article enough to go forward with it.
If I relieve it at town meetings...
But I, but, but we're the selectmen, and it's our article, okay? And if you're not going to speak for it... And Colin's kind of not decided.
I might be quiet, but I'm not going to speak for it.
I mean, I think that, I don't, you know, I, like I said, at this point, I'm supportive of allowing it to go to town meeting, and...
Well, I understand, but it's not just something that we as selectmen just put in front of the town meeting and vote on it if you want to. I mean, they're going to want to know, "Why did we put it on there? Why do we think it's necessary? Why are we even asking them to consider it?" Okay? And if, if, if we're not behind that, or at least a majority of us are not behind that, then to me, it fails. Now, how about if we vote on it?
I would move that we support Article, what number is it? I'm sorry.
11.
I would move that we support Article 11.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we will speak for it.
I will, I'll update this spreadsheet. We'll include this in the packets for town meeting.
And you're going to put the proposal in the packets, right, Andy? I think we talked about?
Uh...
Yeah, we did.
Did we talk about that one? Okay.
Do you have enough time?
Just that one page is all you need, right?
I don't know.
What did you mean by the proposal?
Well, the proposal's like 12 or 14 pages.
Yeah, I know, we don't want that.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just remember talking about proposal. We were talking about the personnel proposal downstairs, not that one, you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that, the treasure collector one, that's in there.
Okay.
Okay. 3.5, review board of selectmen policy number 2-05, sick time.
So can I jump in?
Yes.
Back to 3.4 on the town meeting stuff? Do you want to assign articles tonight?
No, we'll do that tomorrow.
Yeah, we usually do.
Do it at 6 o'clock tomorrow? Okay.
It's kind of fun.
Just don't give me any ass to read that I don't support, okay?
Well, yeah, but you know what? I mean, I feel, I honestly feel as though if a majority votes on it, like, it, let's say that I'm, I'm on the no side and you two vote for it. My feeling is, as a board member, I go with what my board is recommending.
Oh, I agree with that, but if, if, if it's something you support, because it's the majority of board, that's why it's on the warrant, but, you know, I still feel that as a taxpayer even, you have a right to speak against it if you don't believe it.
Oh, sure, as a taxpayer, you have a right to do that.
So, I have no problem.
No, I read it.
No, it looks good to me.
Andy made the changes we had asked.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I would move that we adopt the revised sick leave donation policy, number 2-05.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.6, review guidance document for vacation accruals.
Can we table this for...
Yes, please.
Would you mind?
No.
Okay. I would move that we table, I didn't have a chance to read it, that's all.
I did, but I have questions, so...
Was there any? Okay, good. So I would like to table item 3.6 to the next meeting.
Yeah, let's do it to the, at the next one. I, I would like to keep going with these. I think we're on a roll here.
I would move, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead here.
3.7, update on capital borrowing, bond anticipation note to be signed 12/9/14.
Oh, yeah, I, I mentioned this last week. We're meeting next week to do the tax classification hearing. On that, we'll have the, we'll have the bond, the borrowing paperwork. I think we'll have our, our number tomorrow from, for Southwest, find out what the, what the activity was, what the interest was, and what the, what the rate was, so...
So we'll know for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
No other action needed on that.
3.8, review request for one-day special liquor license.
I would move that we approve the one-day special liquor license request for Terry Roy of Townsend, W6538, for a holiday party to be held on December 20th, 2014, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.9, continue review and discussion of goals. Let's table that, please.
Please. Thank you.
4.1, council on aging. Review the request of the council on aging to hire Donna Fenton as the volunteer coordinator.
Is this, is this position the same, like the meals coordinator, or is this a brand-new...
This is a, this is the position previously held by Claire Devine.
Okay, so it's paid for with a grant?
Yeah.